Seven, twenty twenty-three. So if you would please all rise with me and stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then please remain standing for just a brief moment of silence. All right, thank you, everybody. May be seated. All right, we'll move to the adoption of tonight's agenda. Do we have any requested changes to the agenda as published? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda as published.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda as published.
Motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
All around. No general public comments tonight. I'm going to look for a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous again. Recognitions, Ms. Dina. Chop, chop. Eagle Scout.
And he's not here yet, so, but that's okay.
Tell us about it. Keep talking.
Yes, so, we, uh, Jordan Simpson is, is our latest Eagle Scout. And he, uh, worked in collaboration with the Park and Rec team to make a rec box. So a rec box is fun activities, just like the little libraries that has free books. We have fun activities in this rec box that is located in the community corner, um, right beside Mary O'Neill's, near the entrance on Main Street. And we think this is an awesome addition to the park system, um, to have this activity based, um, basically like a little rec center, uh, within the area for families to enjoy while they're eating their ice cream, um, or waiting on their tables for the restaurants. He's with Troop One Twenty, um, and that's one of our local troops, um, and we're glad to have this in addition to the park system.
That's awesome. Anybody's trying out, is anybody trying out the hula hoops yet?
Oh, yes, we actually have already had to replace, um, one of them, um, because it's been well-used already.
That's great. That's great.
And that's it.
All right, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, well, uh, if he, uh, is able to, uh, arrive, we'll, uh, certainly give him a little recognition there. Uh, no presentations tonight, uh, public hearings are zilch as well, so we're going to move to old business. And so for that, we have James Kelly. Welcome up to the podium. We're talking about the second reading of a proposed ordinance. Floor is yours.
Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am doing the second reading of our proposed loading and unloading ordinance for the TAP project. Just to give you, uh, just to recap real quick here, this is, this was, this feedback was solicited from adjacent businesses and property owners along both North, North Providence and East North Main. This is part of a need for our downtown Waxaw enhancement project. And the purpose of these loading and unloading zones is really to provide dedicated areas for vehicles to load and unload materials and goods, and provide a smooth traffic flow for accommodating those larger vehicle types. So again, just to recap, we are converting the two parallel parking spaces to loading and unloading on East North Main, and converting three of the angled parking spaces to loading and unloading on North Providence. It's also important to note that these loading zones may be utilized for authorized food trucks outside of the set loading and unloading times. Just as some updates from last time, we've revised to include the eight o'clock to four P M. Time consistency for loading and unloading. We've added language to indicate civil penalties for any violations that may occur. And, um, there was a conflict last time. Just to note, Planning Department will follow up with a text amendment to the Land Use Code, eliminating any of those potential conflicts with the three parking space requirement for food trucks. And then finally, language was incorporated to account for those pickup and deliveries of materials and goods. So we're looking for a motion.
All right, so we've been down this road and a lot of input from our board. Any other additional comments that we didn't cover already, Board? All right. Our presenter's looking for a motion, so can I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance O R D two zero two three zero one six, establishing regulations for loading and unloading zones on North Providence Street and East North Main Street.
All right, motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you, James. Appreciate that. Thanks for all the work in leading up to this. It isn't all just about tonight, is it? So new business. We got the first reading of the proposed ordinance establishing a downtown Plaza Social District. Ashley, our downtown director, for the moment.
Hi, guys. Perfect. So tonight, we're going to talk about, um, a social district on the East North Main Street Downtown Plaza. So some background on social districts in North Carolina, um, it was signed into law in September of twenty twenty-one, and then there were some updates that were made in July twenty twenty-two. Um, social districts are designated areas where someone can consume alcohol that's sold by a permatee within that district. So those areas could be indoor, outdoor areas of a business, um, private property, including those that are able to sell, um, alcohol as well as those that aren't. And then public streets, crosswalks, and parking areas. So, for example, you could go into, say, Cork and Ale, buy a glass of wine, um, in a specific cup, then walk outside onto the new downtown plaza with it and enjoy that cup of, a cup of wine. Um, then the decision to participate is completely up to the business. So the business does not have to participate into it in, um, the social district. It's solely up to that business. And that's the same for permittees and non-permittees. Um, and then you are now able to bring alcohol from one business into another. Um, so you could go from Cork and Ale with your glass of wine over to Dream Chasers. Now, there are a lot of these in the state. We're almost two years since this was signed into law. So we do have several locally around us. So Monroe has had one, um, that has gone really well. Um, South End and Plaza Midwood have, um, have some now, and then Kannapolis and Davidson have theirs as well, um, also all going very well. Uh, so we're proposing, along with our, our Downtown Waxaw Association Board and our Economic Vitality Committee, to do kind of a small test of a social district. Um, so we would do this on Friday, August fourth. That's the same day as our grand opening for the Downtown Plaza. Um, the time would be from five to nine P M. And then our A B C permittees that are included in that would be both Dream Chasers and Cork and Ale. Um, we'd have signage posted at all exit points, um, specific cups that are, um, no more than sixteen ounces. We'll also have some wine cups for those of you wine, those wine drinkers. Um, we'll also have trash cans throughout, um, the festival grounds and at the exits to make sure that we're, um, we're not, we're not having, um, a lot of litter on our, our new plaza. And then lastly, um, we will create a website for this. So we're working with comms, um, to create that webpage that holds the maintenance plan and then any information about the social district. You can see here our map of the area. Um, so that's just East North Main Street and North Providence. So East North Main between sixteen and North Providence, and then North Providence from East North Main to Howie Mine. So it would just be around that corner. That, uh, those little triangles on that map show where we would put our signage. So those are kind of the, the exit points where we think people would go use a crosswalk or a sidewalk to get out of, out of the event. So our next steps is, you know, first the presentation, first reading tonight. Um, our second reading would then be on your July eleventh meeting, and that is where you would adopt it. And then we'll create that webpage that can go live, um, so people can receive information about that before the July eleventh meeting. Um, then lastly, our Economic Vitality Committee, um, really talked through ways to measure success of this. You know, we want to use this as a test and figure out if we want to do this, um, at, at other events or more long-term. So these are the ways we're going to measure that suc, that success. So we're going to look at the number of people that attend that event. Um, we'll be able to compare that with like a normal Friday night downtown, um, and then how, how the, um, how the attendance has changed. Uh, we'll also ask our businesses to help with sales. So tell us, were their sales up because of the social district, or was there any change? Um, we will also produce a survey that will house on that social district page on the website. Just a quick survey that really just asks the attendees, what did you think? Do you want to see this again? And then lastly, we'll get feedback, um, from the police department, too. So we want to receive any info they might have of, um, any issues they had with the district or with attendees in the district. Okay. Are there any questions?
Feedback or question. Commissioner Morey.
Hey, so let's say there's two businesses, A and B, both want to participate. For some reason, A doesn't want B's cups in their business.
Yep.
How does that work? And is that clearly defined for any future folks that want to participate?
There would be signage on the door, um, that would say no outside alcohol. So that way, outside alcohol from business B couldn't go into A.
Okay.
And that's the same for, say, a, a retail business. So if a retail business was open that night and didn't want alcohol in, we would have a sign on the door that just said, no, no outside food or drink.
I, I think those points should be really emphasized so that folks, you know, don't walk into it not knowing or having had the opportunity to know before they go in and create.
Absolutely.
Do we think that somebody would not, a business would not allow that, endorse it? I think they're all been working pretty good, pretty well together.
Yeah, both of the A B supermittees, so both Dream Chasers and Cork and Ale are fine, um, with the, the alcohol going in and out of each business. Um, the retail shops, I imagine there will be some that won't want alcohol in, and that's fine. Um, so we'll clearly sign that and then make that clear on maps for the evening as well.
Can we, can we go to those business owners and those property owners and clearly ask them?
Exactly.
How they feel about it and then make sure that, again, the whole process is here, too, so that we don't have any negative kind of.
Exactly.
And for public consumption, no pun intended. So two things on that. How do we enforce that? So say, say if a business had a do not enter sign on there and somebody did enter, what happens next?
So if someone did enter, Dex, you may be able to speak to this a little bit.
I knew I'd draw him up here.
It would, it would be on the individual. Um, that's my understanding, correct?
Correct. It'd be on the store owner to tell them to leave. If they didn't leave, they'd be trespassing.
Trespassing. And so you guys then have the enforcement capability there.
Trespassing, correct.
Okay, all right, fair enough. The other question on that is, I see on that green, um, map that you got there. So what I'm looking at, I think, is the town's right-of-way in that green. So it doesn't extend beyond the town's right-of-way.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, sure that everybody understands that. It's going to be difficult for them not to go up on the bridge or something like that. So we have to be careful with that. So we're going to have to post that as well.
Exactly.
Okay, appreciate that. Any other questions, comments, anybody?
Any feedback from the business owners down in that section?
All right, this is an informational, uh, piece here from Ms. Ashley. So, uh, second reading is next time around. So any thoughts, questions that anybody has, please direct them either to Ms. Ashley directly or through the town manager. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next up, consideration of public art donation. Dina, you're up again.
All right. There we go. Um, so tonight, I'm bringing forth a public art donation. Um, this donation cam, comes from the American Legion Post, um, two oh eight Ladies Auxiliary. Uh, the artist is Mr. Peter Ravino. He's actually one of our renowned artists that lives in our area. He's owned several of the art pieces at the Wall of Honor, um, in our downtown. Um, Mr. Peter, of course, is a renowned artist, uh, and we're very blessed to have him in our area. Valor is what you see right here. Um, it is a eagle with American flag in the background. It is a, um, bronze patina, um, over clay, and it will be placed at the Wall of Honor. If you're looking at it from the business side, it's going to be on the, um, left bay, and that is right here. It's basically going to be a mirror image of the other side, on the right side. There is a black pedestal, um, that has another piece from Ashley and Mr. Peter, um, that would be placed there. Um, it's the same height, um, of the art, um, that's already there. Um, the, can we ask, is there any questions? Or move on? Okay, awesome. To recap the process, uh, the donor came to myself to go over the concept and vision. Then we went to the, um, P S A J at the time, now the, um, the Public Art Committee, went through, uh, several meetings on vetting out the donor, the artist, um, the type of art, made sure it goes with our policy, um, our art policy. Everything, um, went great. The, um, PAC unanimously approved moving it towards, uh, y'all for a B O C meeting, um, for consideration. The response, the financial responsibility, um, is on the donor. It's a hundred percent, um, for the commission and the install. The town's responsibility is to site prep and the plaque. The timeline for insta, installation is this fall. And our next step tonight is to, um, accept the donation for the valued art piece at, um, it is ten thousand dollars, um, and ask for your consideration on that. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Dina? Comments? This is certainly one of those, uh, everything in government is a process, and we do have a process for doing this now, so it'd be nice to see that in place. All right, if there are no other questions on this item, I'm going to look for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the donation of public artwork, Valor, from Peter Ravino, valued at ten thousand dollars.
All right, the motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the way around. All right, thank you. Thank you, Dina. Appreciate that. It would be exciting, uh, to see that go up. Next one, we have, uh, Ms. Melody coming up, the endorsement of the Safe Streets and Roads, uh, All Grant. So, uh, floor is yours.
Thank you. So tonight, I'll be sharing with you an opportunity that we have to apply for a Safe Roads and Streets for All Grant. Um, and so this is a federal grant. It's administered by the U S Department of Transportation. It's got about one billion of funds available for awards this year. And so this is the second year that this grant will be available. The first year, pretty much all of the applications were awarded. And so we anticipate a little bit more competition this year as people catch on. Um, but we still feel that our application will be favorable, uh, or will be favorably received. And so the main purpose of this grant is to improve ra, roadway safety by reducing or eliminating fatalities and serious injuries. And the way that it's done is by developing and implementing a safety action plan. So you basically have two steps. The first step is to apply for the development of a plan for a grant, and then the second one is the development of an implementation grant. So we're at the first step. So Waxaw's proposal is to develop a comprehensive safety action plan, which would look at the town as a whole to identify those, uh, areas that need safety improvements. And so we would be applying for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with a local match of twenty percent or thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the federal share would be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And so we would have five years to fulfill the grant requirements. And, uh, funds would be available by reimbursement. So we would have to have the funds upfront budget for them in F Y twenty-four, twenty-five, so the next fiscal year. And so this would create the opportunity for us to, um, apply for a safety implementation grant for a project. And hopefully about two years, um, we're anticipating that it would take about a year to put an agreement in place with the federal government and then be able to, to develop the plan. We would also be able to prioritize needed improvements based on the results of the plan. And also, this plan would help support future grant opportunities. So the timeline that we're looking at right now is, I'm before you tonight, asking for your support for this grant application. And, uh, so the deadline for submission is July tenth. And then, uh, the awards will be announced by September thirtieth. And then if awarded, we would budget for those funds for in F Y twenty-four, twenty-five. And, um, then hopefully apply for the implementation grant in twenty-five, about this time. And then we just have, uh, uh, requests for you to make a motion to adopt the resolution in support. Any questions?
Everything in government's a process. Any questions? All right, who's going to be my motion maker? Presenter's looking for it.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R E S two zero two three zero one eight, endorsing the town of Waxaw's application for the safe street and roads, all grant application for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
All right, very good. That motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations and nice, uh, nice research. Thank you.
Oh, and I wanted to recognize our staff that has worked on this, our engineers, Matt Hubert and James Kelly. So thanks, guys. Been able to do it without you.
Team in process.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think Barbara's up this time around. We got consideration of appointments to the O A B, so you can tell us all about that again. Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm before you to, um, present a recommendation for the organis, organization Advisory Board. Uh, they are responsible for reviewing all the new candidates and, um, seasoned candidates for, um, the advisory boards. And, um, they do the interview process and make a recommendation to the board by a slate of candidates. Uh, tonight, um, Michael Avola has been, um, representing the O A B for the past year. He has, um, expressed his interest for reappointment to the P C R and appointment to the planning board, which makes him ineligible to continue serving as a member on the O A B. So we are recommending that Christopher Amato, uh, the Vice Chair of the P C R, to replace him in that process. We also, at, if you remember last year, we had, um, no representation from the Historic Preservation Commission. So we would like to officially appoint Paul Fitzgerald and that, um, to that position on the O A B. So part of your motion tonight, uh, is to appoint Christopher Amato and Paul Fitzgerald to serve on the O A B.
Okay. All right, any questions for our presenter tonight? I think, uh, Paul is, was former commissioner. So he's been very active lately in our community. That's nice to see. So any questions, comments, thoughts? All right, we're going to look for a motion on this one, too, for our presenter. Who's got it?
I'll make a motion to appoint Christopher Amato and Paul Fitzgerald to serve as the organization, to serve on the Organization Advisory Board.
All right, motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Barbie. Good to see you here. Nothing on, nothing on, uh, closed session tonight, so we'll go to the town leadership reports. Town Manager Jeffrey Wells, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, three things tonight. First, a quick review of our shred day that we had, uh, just outside here in the P D parking lot on Saturday morning. First of all, we had a, a sunny morning, which was nice to see, which we did not have the whole week, so we were able to fit it in. And if you remember, this was the rain date, uh, from the, the one in April that got, uh, canceled by rain. We had a hundred and twenty-three cars total. So that was a good, steady number. We had two trucks, one on either side that people could come through, so it kept the queuing down to virtually none. So people really didn't have to wait to, uh, get their boxes. We had people that came with one box. We had people that came with two dozen boxes. Everything, everything in between. So I would say it was a successful event and appreciate the, uh, help we got out there from, uh, administration, uh, Melody, uh, Susan, uh, help from public, uh, public services and, and of course Parks and Rec who helped set up for the event. So very appreciative of everybody's, everybody's help for making that, uh, making that event happen. Town campus update. Of course, they had a rough week, too, like every other one did with the rain, but they're still rolling along. Storm drain installation is still ongoing. At the town hall site there, the building footings are complete. Slab on grade work is to start next week. Grading is now continued on the bank. If you drove by there today, you may have seen an excavator doing a lot of work there on the top of the bank. They're bringing that down another six feet. That's where it'll, that's where its final elevation will be. Furniture selection is in progress, and we anticipate the furniture order in October. Right now, the lead time is about twenty weeks on furniture, so you don't want to order too early because they don't like it sitting in a warehouse. But you don't want to order too late either. And the Parks and Rec and Public Services Building, the furniture, we'll start working on that furniture pretty soon here as well. The underground plumbing on that building and the electrical are in progress. All building materials for the metal building have been, uh, sitting on site. So once the footers get, uh, get done there and the slab work's done, then you'll see that building go up pretty quick. State budget update. It's been a quiet week. Not much communication between the House and the Senate, and they're scheduled to take the next week off. So apparently they'll be leaving Raleigh on Thursday and will not return until July tenth. So we won't. So we won't find out anything, I think, on budget appropriation side until sometime in mid-July at the earliest.
All right, all right, any questions for town manager? No, it's, hopefully they get back in session and a few things happen at every level, so appreciate that. All right, thank you, Jeff, appreciate that. Matt Hubert, you're up, assistant town manager and town engineer.
Good evening, just wanted to report a major milestone in TAP last weekend, and thank you to everybody who helped make that possible, but we did the milling and paving of Broom Street, which is gonna be a disruptive operation, and the weather kinda forced us to make a decision to do a road closure completely on Saturday. We wanted to get, make sure that occurred before the Fourth of July festivities, and so in that regard, it was successful. Much appreciation to PD and Public Services, Parks and Rec, and the public in general for putting up with that. Went a little bit long, had a mechanical issue, but maybe about an hour longer than we would've liked, but in, the results are outstanding. They'll be in place for some time, and so I think it was worth, worth the minor issues we had that morning. The median and the stamped crossings are gonna be pushed till after the parade, so we'll have what's in place now, will be functional, and we're expecting to open the Plaza Thursday after they pour that last little bit of ramp in front of Indigo Pearl. We should have that whole quadrant operational for all the businesses and for the parade Then on other notes, we did release the bid for the Cuthberton Crosswalk. We've also got the Park Offsite project coming right in behind that, those bids are out. Sidewalk maintenance is being finalized, and the resurfacing contract is also gonna get bid this summer. Questions, comments?
Great progress going on out there, I would tell you, there were some mayor sightings out there during that whole operation, it was a lot of fun to be out there, rained on you guys a lot, so I wanna commend your entire crew, Public Services, our PD department out there directing traffic, sometimes in the weather, and so, but it went very, very smoothly, didn't see very many hiccups at all out there, so it's, just know it's appreciated, everybody. Any other comments?
Yes, I have some.
Anne?
Hey, Matt, can you, I've gotten some contact from some citizens, specifically residents in the Lawson neighborhood, that were talking about black tiles that were on top of Lawson Drive, can you maybe explain to the citizens what that is and what it was about? The traffic counters?
Oh, okay, specifically, I don't know if, you know, DOT does regular annual counts, and so if they're the pneumatic counts, they're just getting their average daily traffic counts for the year, I don't know if there's anything more to it than that. Most, most counts you wouldn't do when school is out, so I can't really speak, I'm not aware of.
And that wasn't related to, like, the critical intersection analysis?
I don't think so, I mean, we gave them our counts already while school was still in, is when we took ours, but, you know, the county is doing their thing out there as well, it could indeed be that.
Okay, and so if I heard you correctly, you said that the bidding is going out for the Beacon at Cuthberton?
Correct.
Awesome, and when do we anticipate that to start and be finished?
Well, we're anticipating it to be finished before school starts, that's our, that's our goal.
Great.
All right, it's good to see that going along too. Any other thoughts, comments? Matt, thank you very much, a lot of good work out there this week. Next up, Planning and Inspections Director Lisa Thompson, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Bring it up.
All right, so first of all, I wanted to thank Janet Perano, she's one of our planners in the Historic Preservation Commission. They hosted a play at the Museum of Waxalls, it was called Lois Collins Sim, A Century in Waxall. We had about forty staff members and board members in attendance, we got to learn about what it was like to live in Waxall through the early twentieth century, so there were stories of the Great Depression, through the wars, it was neat to hear her brag about the same Main Street and train tracks that we brag about today, so gave me chills, it was, it was cool to hear. As far as July, we have a few text amendments coming your way, one is to propose allowing a private wastewater system when the public is not available. We have some texts about beefing up our landscape ordinances as far as buffers and parking lot landscape. I don't think we'll have any development plans in July, Adalina is tracking to start annexation probably in August, maybe late August, so we may see that conditional zoning this fall. Wanted to thank you all for allowing me to present at the town hall forum, got great feedback from that. I was able to present our Waxall 2040 Plan, kinda talk about what that is and how we create that plan, kinda go through the processes and trusting our ordinances, so it was, it was a great thing. I also showed a chart for home starts over the last few years, I think we've been averaging, you know, close to three hundred, maybe over three hundred over the last ten years. I projected thirty-six for this year, so far we have nine, we're halfway through the year, so just a little update on that, I'm, I'm low on my estimate, that's all I have.
It's the marketing cycle, that's what happens.
Thank you.
All right, and I wanna say thank you to you as well for, in fact, everybody who was with us on Tuesday's town forum, y'all did a great job in being, being able to answer the public's questions, so I appreciate that, it helps a lot. I got a lot of good comments around the horn about people now understand that there is a process.
Yes.
So appreciate that, thank you. Any other comments before she waltzes away there?
I have some.
All right, you don't get away that easy.
Thanks, Lisa, I unfortunately was under the weather and couldn't see you on the town hall, but I did watch online. Something that really struck me is when you were talking about that, is sort of the cycle between the approval and actual, when you see a home being built. And so there seems to be a gap from when it gets approved to when it gets built, and I think one good example is like the Millbridge community. So just for the public, like, the Millbridge was approved in two thousand and four, and now it's just finally twenty, almost twenty years later, finally complete.
Right.
So I think, I have looked at some of the data, and from like nineteen sixty to two thousand, Waxall only has about fourteen hundred homes that was built. The next decade, from two thousand to twenty-ten, was over five thousand four hundred eight homes that were approved and built. And then really, this last decade was probably a handful, like, almost a thousand homes, and really, like, what you just said, when you look at the data, we've been averaging about three hundred new home starts a month for the last...
A year.
Yeah, a year, the last couple of months, and then, or the last couple of years, and this year, right now, we, like you said, we only have nine homes that have started.
Yes.
So I know this board, we actually approved the LDC to really put some ordinances in place to help moving forward, like, addressing issues that we hear from citizens all the time, whether it's traffic. Can you just maybe talk like what we have for ordinance for traffic and what we're doing for parkland and requirements?
Yeah, so we have a updated traffic impact analysis where you have to mitigate any additional trips that you add, so the projects that you have all approved, we haven't seen off the ground, so we don't have any, we haven't seen, you know, some of these new ordinances work. Same thing for parkland and fee in lieu, for every lot that you propose to build or develop, you have to dedicate one thirty-fifth of an acre. So the example was Lawson, if that was built today, that's a thirty-acre park, Millbridge, that's a sixty-acre park donated to the town. We have connectivity, additional access requirements for a number of lots, stormwater, tree stave, open space, I mean, we've really...
So it sounds like what you're saying also is that prior to this board approving the LDC, those types of ordinance weren't in place until we approved them to really mitigate and for the traffic and to add sidewalks and to give parkland in lieu of, and I think you had a number that you said, Millbridge, if they came to us today, would be required to build a sixty-acre park, is that right?
Correct.
And Lawson would've been thirty acres, so...
We're always looking to update our ordinances as we see projects go vertical, so...
Right, and so as a result of that, if those came to us today, the ordinances that this board put in place would address those issues that we hear all the time.
Correct.
Which we have.
Yeah.
And then one other last thing is I know that people talk about traffic, or schools is a big one, schools, we have no control over here in terms of the town per se, so when a project comes to us, first off, through our future planning for the 2040 Plan, they are, they know what's coming, the county as well as the school board, isn't that right?
Right, we send those comprehensive plans to Uni County Public Works, Uni County Public Schools, NC DOT, that's how they get their numbers.
Right, and so previous comprehension, comp plans, I think twenty sixteen was one, and future, and previous years, they were all sent so that they can do their planning and know where to, to build additional schools or if they have a need, like, I think as an example, when Millbridge was approved way back in the early two thousands, that Kensington was built to serve the Millbridge community, and I know at the Cuthberton, they were supposed to build a Cuthberton Elementary School, which is now where the library is going. So they were aware of, of what's coming, and, and that was really incumbent upon that board and the school board as well as the county to, to plan for that future need of their citizens, of their pupils, I guess.
Correct, that's why we do what we do.
Perfect, and one last point is that any projects that this board has approved, which have not been under construction or started yet, by the time they've been approved to, building can be four and five years, which means an elementary school child could be at middle school, or middle school, or high school, or a high school could be off at college, that's how long it takes.
Correct.
In terms of the impact on schools.
Two to three years to get through the process, another year of horizontal construction, it's a good four, five years to go vertical.
Right, 'cause I know a lot I hear, 'cause Jason and I live out over off Cuthberton, and we hear all the time about the David Weekly Homes and Encore going in there, which was approved under the county, and, you know, we had really no, no say in that.
A recent good example of, of plan review that this board would be familiar with, that this board's first rezoning case was the Preserve back in the summer of twenty twenty, and they're still in construction plan review in the town now in twenty twenty-three.
Right, and then just to reiterate, this past year, or this year we're currently in, we've only had nine new home starts in six months, so the big three that I like to call Lawson, Keratin, and Millbridge are built out.
Yep.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments, all the way around? All right, thanks, Lisa, I appreciate that. All right, next up, a comms partner, Jenny Buchholz, so come on up.
Good evening, I'll echo what Lisa said, it really was nice to be able to communicate to our residents at the town hall forum last week, as I always say, all problems are communication problems, and things get mixed up or misunderstood online, it's great for us to have the opportunity to try to correct some of that miscommunication and confusion, one of which I would like to share, there was questions regarding the community-wide survey and whether or not the link was working online, it absolutely is working. I had flipped the PDF from the website over to HubSpot so we could track the links and clicks, and to me, our website developer was working on that. A lot of the website PDFs that we've been uploading to waxall.com have been having glitchy issues, so we reached out to Civic Plus to help us with that, Granicus, my apologies, to help us with those, however, in an interim, I've uploaded it to HubSpot so you can download it, and it is going in the Happenings Digital Newsletter, which we've been pushing promotions for, and are now up to twenty-six hundred followers on that list, and in that town hall recap, we've included the video, as well as a link to the downtown park video, as well as a link to the community-wide survey again, as well as a link to the slide deck, so if you were not at the town hall forum, I encourage anyone that's watching, please look at that recap, it's on there. Coming up this month, we're also going to be doing the Core Value internal implementation, so doing a lunch and learn and talking with department leaders on how to really roll those out into behavior patterns we wanna see on our team. We have posted the downtown park video, as you've seen online, probably, that's the most viewed, we're working with ADW Architects, which had provided that video for us, and we're gonna be splicing it down into shorter segments so that we can actually show it on Instagram and our reels, 'cause right now it's too long. We're also working on the downtown plaza grand opening, so if you have missed that, we are calling that TAP Grant, since that sounds not very fun, we're calling that the downtown plaza, and we're working on a grand opening ribbon cutting for August fourth. In July and August, you'll also see us push and continue to push Waxall 101 signups, we created Waxall Works Together. We're not have a ton of submissions on that site so far, but we're really gonna be doing two video testimonials from former Waxall 101 participants, and then two social posts, and then we'll keep pushing that application to apply, so please help us share that message. And we're gonna continue with the Waxall Trash Communications, just to be clear, I purchased every single domain just in case someone types it in wrong, we have waxalltrashservice.com, we have waxalltrashservices.com, and we have waxalltrash.com, they will all lead you to the same landing page, because I wanted to make sure just in case. We already have nineteen hundred views since that had launched a week ago, and we've already have seventeen form submissions for people signing up for trash, so I think it's working, excited to see that, and we'll keep putting out that word about, you know, the bulk item pickup, no, there's not a trash yard debris fee, right? Just clarifying that for all of our friends online, it's just the bags that you have to purchase. And then finally, Parks and Rec has been working on a new work order system, it's through GoGov, and so there's an app that apparently is going to launch, and I am going to meet with GoGov tomorrow to get information on that, and as soon as I have that, I will share that up to the board and communicate what that looks like before we then fully launch that to the community. But that's meant to hopefully help people submit work orders easier, and that's all I got, thank you.
All right, any questions, comments? Pedro?
I brought it up to Jeff before about the wording, the trash, aim for bulk items and all that, has that been reworded as to not cause that confusion?
Well, I was gonna mention it to her tomorrow morning, it just makes it to me before the meeting, but...
So the answer's no, 'cause I didn't know about it.
It sounded like you said that, so my apologies.
Is it the nominal fee thing?
Yes.
Oh, that's funny, 'cause that was the comment I saw, that's the comment I saw on Facebook, friends, the nominal fee is regarding the bags, not that the yard debris costs, so yes, that's fine, and that makes sense, and thank you, I will update.
I, I think what it was is some folks were understanding that for bulk items, they had to pay.
Correct.
Someone made the comment or asked the question, since when do we have to start paying, and that kinda snowballed into, so there, there needs a little more clarification.
That makes sense, that's fine.
Right, they, they think that you have to pay, it's not...
Yes, and I was gonna go back to what Commissioner Simpson said, after working with the town for eight years, I mean, it took me the first two years to understand zonings and how things take and how long it's that, that's why I kept encouraging our citizens, please, just go to our website, check it out, if you, if you have a question, I'm happy to answer it on communications@waxall.com, it's confusing to understand how this stuff works, so hoping that we can continue to get that message out.
Just a comment, I, I appreciate getting, getting the word out about Lawson, 'cause I did have some citizens reach out to me about the A and B, 'cause they were, thought they would have three weeks without recycling, but the B side of Lawson will get recycling back-to-back weeks before they get onto the new routine.
Yes, and thank you, 'cause we got hold of the HOA, yes, if we could be on those HOA pages, that would be really helpful too.
Well, I'm on some, so I can send it to me.
And just to give a, a kudos to Waste Pro on that, we had, we had expressed a concern, it's like, okay, when we do this switch to A and B, you know, how long is it gonna be before they get service, and they were on the spot, they're like, well, we're, we're gonna do it two weeks in a row so they don't have a long gap, so we appreciate that, it's, it was easy.
And one final plug, because it is a holiday week, there's a change in trash schedule, you know, for July fourth, to me, it's already got that ready to go in, in our social channels too, so, all right.
All right, thank you, Jenny, appreciate that, appreciate all the help. Assistant chief Dexter Wilson.
Good evening, we're halfway through twenty twenty-three, and I wanted to run some crime stats by you, where we were last year this time, from January to present, and where we are this year. Assaults were down seventy-one percent, violent crimes down forty-five percent, vehicle break-ins were up forty percent, so if people can remember to lock their cars, nine-tenths of the vehicle break-ins, if they don't see anything valuable in the car, they shake the door handle, they keep moving. So if we could, if we could lock those cars, that'd be great. Larcenies were down forty-eight percent, auto theft's down sixty percent, mostly because people aren't leaving their keys in the car, so we're doing very well in that area. Driving while impaired, we're up eighty-six percent, fraud and ID theft, we're up sixteen percent. I think most people would know, a lot of the crimes we receive are fraud and ID theft. They prey on people they know have a good credit score, and they can get your information, and then they can go through avenues to get all your information and figure out that you're a good citizen and have good credit. We have, we've had twenty-two overdoses so far this year, where a large majority were fentanyl-related. In twenty twenty-two at this time, we were at seventeen overdoses. Currently, and for the past four years, our narcotics detectives were sworn in part-time as Homeland Security Investigations Task Force officers. In the past six months, they've seized nineteen pounds of fentanyl, three... In the past six months, they've seized nineteen pounds of fentanyl, three pill presses that turn straight fentanyl into pill form, seventy-one point six pounds of cocaine, a hundred and sixty-two pounds of crystal meth, eleven ounces of opium, seventeen pounds of psilocybin mushrooms, which are good mushrooms to some people, not to us. A hundred dosage units of Xanax, three thousand seven hundred fifty-two pounds of marijuana, and nine hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars in U S currency that were proceeds from narcotic sales, of which the Waxahall Police Department receives approximately fifteen to fifty percent of this money, depending on how many people we have involved in the operations. Once it is processed as drug proceeds by the federal government, this money can be used to buy equipment that may not be possible without our relationship with Homeland Security Investigations. So we love our relationship with them. Our criminal detectives are also sworn as Homeland Security Investigations Task Force officers, but they work child sex crimes, and they'll work the area of Indian Land, Lancaster, Waxahall, the area around Waxahall, as well as some of Charlotte. In the past six months, we've had, we've charged two offenders with multiple sex crimes. They were in Waxahall that came from leads from Homeland Security Investigations. They also do campaigns where they locate online predators that might prey on children from Waxahall in chat rooms, and we're getting ready to run a campaign for that either this year or early next year, where we'll call predators in and get them off the streets. So a lot of good police work going on. The guys out here on the streets are doing a great job. And I read an article the other day that talked about if we're not taking people to jail, then crime goes up, and it's, it's been shown through research, just that. So as you can see from crime doing, going down in those areas, we're doing the right thing.
That's really great work, and all of this goes on typically while we sleep.
Correct.
You guys are, your crew is out there...
And I'm sleeping too.
Yeah, sleeping too. But you get called, I know that.
Yes, sir.
So I thank you for that. Any thoughts, comments? Thank you. Appreciate it, Dex. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna pivot here a little bit. I'm gonna have Ms. Deena come back up, 'cause I see our scout has arrived here, so just a quick moment of floor space for you.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Jordan Simpson. He is our scout, our Eagle Scout that did the rec box for us at the Community Corner.
Hi, I'm Jordan Simpson.
Well, we wanna say thank you for that project that you did. Know certainly was a requirement for you to do that, but we certainly appreciate all the efforts that you put onto it, and it looks nice over there. I've seen it, and just wanna make sure that we would be able to recognize you here, so thank you for being here tonight, and I think we have photo op going on over here to my right.
Sure. Yeah.
For all our friends online.
Yes.
Do you mean it back there? Yeah. I can get back there.
Okay, move on.
Makes for a better picture. Oh, very nice. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. There we go. That's a lot better picture. Thank you. All right. All right.
All right. Board of Commissioners, any thoughts, comments? We've got another group. I don't know. We've all really, really, all together, and I appreciate all of what everybody does, all the comments, all the conversations that we have. That's appreciated, so hearing that, seeing that, oh, Charlie, you're over there. I'm sorry, I left you out.
Briefly, briefly, Mayor, I wanna do something I haven't done since twenty twenty-one. I'm gonna take some vacation.